This conference, this conference is no longer being recorded. Uh oh, uh oh.
It's okay, I got it.
That's not good.
It's seven o'clock, we're gonna call the regular village board meeting to order if I would rise to say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could ask everybody just to remain standing for just a moment, I'd like to start the meeting tonight with just a moment of silence for all of those who've been affected by the COVID-19 virus and those who've lost their lives and everybody who's out battling the virus now and I just think for the entire nation right now, just a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. The corporate, please call the roll.
Morevka?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
March?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ham?
Here.
Bowden?
Here.
Okay, as everybody knows, this is kind of the first time we've ever had to do this, fortunately, and hopefully, you know, it won't last long, I have a feeling it's gonna be a couple more times before we get to the end of this, so I thank everybody for cooperating, and I think this is just a good idea to help with the social distancing as we go forward. We'll move on to item two, approval or corrections to the minutes of the March 9th, 2020 regular village board meeting, are there any addition or correction to those minutes? If not, I would take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Motion it.
Second?
Charlie.
Mike Jones, second.
Okay, motion by trustee Morevka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Present.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Present.
Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 3/7/20 in the amount of $47,539.90, pay period ending in 3/21/20 in the amount of $49,011.72, accounts payable general fund $29,444.46, giving a total of all current funds $29,444.46. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, I would accept a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion, Parker.
Second?
March.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee March.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, any public comment and/or questions? We'll move on to reports of committees, village administrator report.
Um, I have no report this time.
Okay, Department of Public Works report.
Uh, good evening all, this is Bob from DPW, hope everybody's doing well. A couple of reports I have is, uh, the Deco Grant ADA ramps, um, should start within the week, um, also, uh, the village hall roof, the re-roof from the hail, is scheduled to be done this spring, uh, reached out to numerous roofers, uh, no response because, oh, I got response, I take that back, um, most of them are still scheduled, have scheduling from last year, I was able to get a local, uh, Tom Zach roofing, we've done with them before, so that's, uh, like I said, unscheduled to go. Uh, the other thing I have an update on is the Public Works building, uh, the landscape will begin, uh, shortly, uh, so, uh, we have ADL doing that, ADL Landscape, local company out of Peatown, um, also, I want to report, uh, with the DPW is, um, we're adjusting our schedule, uh, because of COVID-19, uh, what we're gonna be doing is, uh, we're gonna be rotating days with staff, just so we're not exposed to each other so much, um, and we continue to, uh, wash hands and pretty much, uh, social distance, you know, as that moves forward, so.
And I think one of the things that we announced today is that we're postponing the start of rush pickup, correct?
Correct.
And that's because?
May 4th.
Okay, because it requires two people to be working in pretty close proximity, uh, when they're doing that, so for, uh, just out of an abundance of caution, I'd rather not see that happening, so.
You are correct, Steve.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
Yes, that is my report.
All right, any trustees, anybody have a question?
I have a question, this is Mike Jones for Bob, how that roof project, is that a single roof or is that flat roof?
That is single roof, they are going to look at a few spots on the flat roof, Mike, um, where we had some issues.
Okay, does Tom Zach do that too?
Yes, yes he is.
Okay, very good.
All right, any other questions for Bob? All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, no police chiefs report, uh, do we have an engineers report?
Um, Troy gave me a, um, a report that I can read for you.
Okay.
It's relatively short, it's just, um, he had also had the DCO sidewalk project on here, but Bob covered that, so I'll just go over what he had here for a second point, and it's on the I-57 ramp update, um, with the truck stop project, um, Peatown Wilmington Road turn lanes and I-57 ramps, the traffic impact study was recently updated as the IDOT comments requested, the update study, the updated study confirmed that the turn lanes IDOT requested on Wilmington Road and the I-57 exit ramps are warranted in both the existing and future conditions, we are now working on a conceptual plan that shows the widening in turn lanes on an aerial view to submit back to IDOT and WillDOT for review, their responses will determine if the shorter the normal turn lane storage and tapers on Wilmington Road would be allowable, because no bridge widening is in this scenario, if IDOT and WillDOT agree with this conceptual turn lane exhibit, the project would have to be designed if the village and developer are going to move forward with this and resubmit to IDOT at a later date, so that's the engineers report.
All right, any questions on that, any of the trustees? All right, we'll move on to old business, item A, intergovernmental agreement, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and Build to Peatown Prioritization Report.
So, the, um, I sent you an updated, um, intergovernmental agreement, um, it shows no local contribution, so, um, that would be what we would want to accept tonight if you wanted to, and the only requirement that that would have is that we implement one or more of the recommendations that would come out of this, um, Peatown Priorities Planning Study, and, um, so, the first, um, part of this would be, uh, the kickoff, our pre-kickoff work, the IGA is part of that pre-kickoff work, um, putting together a steering committee is part of that, um, we've worked on that and put together about five local people, um, we would need to, uh, work on getting them together and brainstorm other, um, uh, local stakeholders that would be interviewed at a later date, um, probably won't be physically getting together, but we'll work on that later and, um, how, what a platform we would get together, um, to have a kickoff meeting, um, we would need to then, um, do, gather research of other planning documents that, um, we've done in the past for them to study, and then, um, they'd meet with me or other staff people, um, to kind of pull together information to, um, then go out with and meet with, um, do some public outreach, um, come up with key recommendations, um, create the priorities plan, and then that would culminate in a plan, a priorities plan approval process, um, so that would be what we would be looking forward to getting going and, uh, getting started with probably in the next month.
Any questions from the trustees?
No.
Okay, if there's no questions, any discussion, I would ask for a motion to adopt, uh, the intergovernmental agreement for a Village of Peatown Prioritization Report from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning.
Bowden, sumo.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Morevka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to new business, item A, raffle license application, Sue Lacarlin Adopt a Soldier, April the 25th, 2020. Uh, this is for, is this for the? Okay, so they're gonna be selling chances, a number of 400 maximum chances at $10 apiece, uh, this is going to start, uh, I think it says April the current until April the 25th, so, this, they're gonna start selling, and then they're planning on selling right now until April the 25th.
What are they selling them at?
Uh, it says the Legion game on bowling alley and different individuals throughout the community. So, of course, a couple of those places might be a little tough right now, but, um, and they, you know, they may end up extending the date, we'll have to wait and see, but that's what the application says at this time. Any discussion? Uh, not a motion to approve the raffle, uh, permit for Adopt a Soldier.
This is March, are there a motion? Can we, uh, approve it with a date of like June 30th in case they want to extend it?
That's fine with me, so do you want to make that part of a motion, Dr. March?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the motion would be to approve the application for the license to sell raffle tickets, uh, not to exceed June the 30th. Is there a second?
Second, Ham.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Ham.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
All right, item B, Peatown Boy Scout Troop 315, request to canvass the village, April the 20th and the 27th, to sell pancake breakfast fundraiser tickets, um, the last meeting, the Boy Scouts were present, kind of gave their, um, their pitch to the, to the village board, but this is just back on the agenda for formal approval, uh, what they're talking about is, uh, the Peatown Boy Scouts, Troop 315 will be holding their annual pancake breakfast fundraiser on Sunday, May the 3rd, 2020, at the Peatown American Legion Hall, they're requesting permission to canvass the village from April the 20th to the, on the, will be on April the 20th and the 27th as a group, they will also, uh, request permission for the scouts to sell on their own around town until the week of the event. So I'm assuming that, you know, their leaders will be monitoring them, making sure that they're not out in a big group, making sure that they're social distancing properly, and I would put that as part of that approval.
What about the event?
Pardon me?
Is it what about the event, that, that's a social gathering?
Well, and that, you know, that's, that's subject to the governor's, you know, um, executive order, right now, it's past, you know, the stop of the executive order, if that executive order would extend, you know, to that, then of course, that, that's gonna have to be rescheduled.
Okay, that's fair.
But right now, they're saying May the 3rd, and right now, the executive order is until April the 7th, I, may I anticipate that being extended, I just don't know how long it's going to be extended, I would assume, you know, to the end of April, more than likely, I mean, that's kind of what the talk has been, but then, you know, as we get closer to that, it may be extended again, we just don't know at this time.
That's what they were saying on the news today, April 30th.
So with those, the, you.
March.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morevka.
March?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, item C, ordinances, number one, an ordinance approving request for offense variance, 812 Bonnie Lane, K Daniels petitioner, uh, this was presented at the last village board meeting, uh, the board voted to approve the variance, and this is just the ordinance to finalize that, so this would be ordinance number 19-49, an ordinance approving your request for offense variation, 812 Bonnie Lane. Any discussion? I would just note that the date should be, um, at the end, adopted 2020, there's a typo, it's 2019 there, it should be 2020. Just make that correction. Okay. A motion to adopt ordinance number 19-49.
Bowden, sumo, motion.
Okay, I got the motion by trustee Bowden, who is the second?
Second, Parker.
Second by trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Morevka?
Yes.
All right, number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 General Regulations, Chapter 92 Civil Emergencies of the Peatown Village Code Regarding Emergencies, maybe I'll let the attorney explain this a little bit, I mean, basically, what we're trying to do is just make sure that we have our ducks in a row in case we need to do anything more local.
Yes, that is correct, the basic part of the amendment is to add, well, first of all, we have changed the title from Civil Emergencies to State of Emergency, and essentially added in Pandemics to Cover the Coronavirus. Otherwise, it's very similar to, uh, what we had, uh, a few things were, were added, but in particular, we added that, uh, the emergency can include but not be limited to an epidemic or other outbreak of disease or public health emergency, pestilence, and then the language that we currently had, flood, act of God, other, other such, uh, things. Um, it allows the president to declare a, uh, a state of emergency, which really is not anything new, and the president does, under the municipal code, have the authority to, uh, declare, uh, emergency situations within the village, uh, it, it sets forth what the declaration of the state of emergency has to include, uh, it has to be executed under oath by the village president, has to state the facts that, uh, underlie the need for it, uh, it has to reference statements from the governor, the federal government, or whatever, uh, with regard to, uh, the emergency, whatever it might be, and, um, it is to state protocols and procedures to be followed during the, um, during the, uh, emergency, so it's really an update, um, I think it's in good order and ready to be adopted.
Any questions or discussion? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-50, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 General Regulations, Chapter 92 Civil Emergencies of the Peatown Village Code Regarding Emergencies.
Bowden, motion.
I've got a motion by trustee Morevka, I need a second.
Second, Parker.
Second by trustee Parker.
Morevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
I think I got every, it's hard to do it when they're not.
All right, item D, special event, number one, Christ Community Church Community Easter Egg Hunt, 4/11, 4/4 to 4/11, so, uh, basically, in your packet, you have the, I'll read the letter, though, just so we have it in the record, Christ Community Church is planning to host a community-wide Easter egg hunt, similar to the Peatown Rocks, the overall plan is to fill approximately 400 plastic eggs with non-food items, such as stickers, tattoos, rings, bracelets, et cetera, along with a raffle ticket, 50 eggs will be hidden around the community on public property each day between April the 4th and April the 11th, eggs would then be hunted as families go on walks and get outside in the community through April the 11th, there will be five golden eggs that are instant winners, prizes to be claimed at Christ Community Church, a grand prize raffle ticket for a larger prize will be drawn on Saturday, April 11th at noon, and the winning ticket number being posted on Facebook to claim the grand prize at Christ Community Church, our hope is that this would be a fun family activity for children, preschool to fifth grade, getting families outside in the community and having fun as they hunt for eggs together. So again, this is just, I think, another good way of getting people hopefully outside, um, spread out, you know, not close to each other, you know, it's gonna be up to the families, to the parents, to make sure that they're keeping their children in a, in a safe environment, but I, I think this is a good, you know, a good thing being done by the church. Are there any questions, comments? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the special event, uh, application from Christ Community Church for the Community Easter Egg Hunt.
Bowden, motion.
Second?
Second, Parker.
Motion by trustee Morevka, seconded by trustee Parker.
Morevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
All right, item E, approval of the proposed 2020-2021 working budget, um, I think everybody has a copy of the working budget, I mean, this has been the, the subject of, um, a couple of different committee meetings, administrative oversight, and I think out of the last committee of the whole meeting, um, this is where we kind of landed for the working budget, I don't know, Amy, did you have anything to add to that?
No, unless they have any questions.
Any questions or discussion from the trustees?
Okay.
Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed 2020-2021 working budget of the Village of Peatown.
Bowden, March.
Second?
Second, John is Bowden.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Jones.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right, item F, temporary waiver of restriction on Class E liquor licenses, uh, what this is, um, I had spoken with the village attorney, uh, last week, I had talked with a couple of our local businesses, our, our E, uh, excuse me, our E liquor license holders, our Fire Pit, uh, Tonys and Sammies, so basically, what we did was gave them a waiver where they're able to sell packaged goods, packaged liquor, packaged beer, uh, with this E liquor license now, currently, um, for a period of time, you know, I talked to these businesses, and everybody's trying to do what they can, you know, to stay in business during this pandemic, and, um, Game On, who is on A license, you know, already has this ability, and they're doing some of that, you know, along with their food carryouts, um, Fire Pit, I think currently, they've decided they've closed, uh, at this time, you know, to reopen as soon as, uh, they're able to, once the governor's executive order expires, um, I'm not sure, you know, exactly to what level Tonys and Sammies is doing this, I talked to the owners of both businesses, they're both very grateful, uh, for the opportunity, just more to get rid of some inventory, you know, hopefully, so it's just not sitting, you know, during this time, now, the, uh, the waiver that was given is good through March the 30th.
Or until.
Or until, okay, yeah.
There's two add-ons, one, if the exclusion by the governor is continued to a later date, then this continues to that date, or until such time as the Board of Trustees would want to terminate it.
So basically, you know, as liquor commissioner, I took this step, but we're bringing it to the board for ratification.
Well, for knowledge.
For knowledge, not necessarily ratification.
Yes, the liquor commissioner has the authority to do this, and this has been made, uh, clear to, through the state, uh, with regard to license, licenses, they said, yes, they, they're encouraging the sale of takeout from the, the restaurants, so they encourage this, uh, we did put into the, um, uh, the declaration that the village board trustees can terminate this if it so decides to do, and I think that power should be there for the village board if they wanted to do it.
But as long as nobody has any objection to it, we'll let it continue, you know, until the time that the executive order expires. Are we good?
Okay. I think this is Bowden, I think it's a great idea, those restaurants need as much help as they can get.
Yeah. Very good, and that's why I tried to take his act, action as quickly as I could, you know, once, uh, once it came to my attention, so. All right, uh.
Make the motion?
No, there's no, no motion necessary, you know, this is just for, yeah, this is just for information. Okay, um, questions in the press, I think we have Chris on the phone?
Yep, I don't, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you, uh, anything from the trustees? Okay, thank you. Anything from the trustees? All right, again, I'd just like to encourage the community to continue, you know, to follow, you know, the requests by the governor with the executive order, with social distancing, you know, with the closing of nonessential businesses. You know, stay in as much as you can, you know, try to keep the children from congregating in large groups. I know it's hard, but, you know, we just have to kind of all work together to get through this.
Hey Steve?
Yes.
Trustee March, I had one comment.
Sure.
So the, the Tiff District that we put in place in the downtown, March, he actually said that we received about $4,500 from that this year. And I was just, you know, with a couple of new businesses trying to spruce up their storefronts, I was just wondering if we could, you know, do something for that amount of money to make, you know, just to make the downtown look a little nicer. You know, I thought maybe, you know, Bob has put out some small flower baskets in the past. I'm wondering maybe if we could either, you know, spring for larger, you know, barrels of flowers downtown, or possibly even, you know, maybe string those elephant lights across the, you know, the street, anything that I, you know, in that budget that we could use that money for.
I think that would be, I can look into that as a Tiff eligible expense. I think, you know.
Yeah, and that's something I think that Public Works Committee can follow up on, but we can, we can take a look and see if that would fall under the Tiff eligible expenses. Trustee March?
Okay, great, yeah. If Amy could look into see if that would be eligible, but, you know, I just thought it'd be kind of a good way for us to show that, you know, we're invested in making that downtown, you know, viable and making it look as nice as possible, and, you know. So, yeah. Hopefully, Amy can look at that, and maybe Public Works Committee can take that up.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else from the trustees?
No.
All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Morevka motion.
Second?
Second, Parker.
Trustee, a motion by trustee Morevka, seconded by trustee Parker to adjourn the meeting. Morevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.